Welcome, everyone. We are going to start our meeting with the swearing in of our new commissioners. Shannon, or Judge Crutcher, are you swearing in both?
I am.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Buffalini. If you will raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Don Buffalini.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
To which I have been duly elected.
To which I have been duly elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of.
The duties and the office, for the office of.
Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Commissioner for the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Representing all the citizens.
Representing all the citizens.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Roberts. Right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Carolyn Roberts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
To which I have been duly elected.
To which I've been duly elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
To support the constitutions of Tennessee.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And the Charter of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Commissioner of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Representing all the citizens.
Representing all the citizens.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the City of Fairview, Tennessee.
Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited that everyone's here tonight. We will open our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting agenda December 5th, 2024, at 7:05 PM. We will start with item number one, roll call. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner McDonald.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
Item number three is prayer and pledge. If everyone would stand. Dear Lord, we are gathered here tonight to do the business of the city. I pray that each and every decision that we make is guided by you, and we do what's best for our community. I pray for each and every one of our community members, that they have a safe and prosperous new year and holiday season. Thank you for our source of guidance, and we just pray in your name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're excited that so many of you have shown up for this special night. I thank everyone for watching on TV and different medias so that they can get all the information, and we just are excited that we have community members that care so much. Also, I want to thank our officers here tonight for keeping us safe. I would like to remind everyone to turn your mics on when you speak and speak directly into the mics, because it's very hard for our community members who are watching online to hear if we don't speak loudly and clearly. Also, just a reminder that we are under Roberts' rules of order, so let's just make sure that we follow those and address the chair before speaking, and also be courteous of our fellow commissioners, and let them finish their conversation before starting a new one. Item number five is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
We have one tonight, Mayor Scott Bryson.
Thank you. If Scott Bryson will come forward, please state your name and address, and if you live in the county or city for the record. No, sir. This isn't the public hearing, but you can speak during citizens' comments if you like.
I want to speak to the rezoning, so if this is not that, I'll wait till.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at that time. Item number seven, public announcements, awards and recognition. A, city events. Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Just want to remind everyone that this Saturday at 10:00 AM, we'll have our Christmas parade. We have approximately 70 participants that will be in the parade. The parade will begin at Westwood Elementary. It'll go down Highway 96 to Fairview Boulevard, past City Center, and it'll end at the France Plant. And then after the parade, we have caroling, pictures with Santa, and tour of the historical village. That'll be from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM as well. Then later on that evening, we have the Christmas tree lighting, which will be from 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM, with the official tree lighting to take place at 5:00 PM. And the Fairview High School choir will be performing at 4:00 PM. And also, on December the 13th, we'll have pictures with Santa at 5:30 PM at the Nature Center, and it'll be from 5:30 until 8:30 PM. And also want to remind everyone that we have a free message alerting system where we put out message alerts regarding road closures, accidents, city events, and city updates as well. And you can sign up for that by simply texting 888777 with the message FVALERTS. Again, that's FVALERTS to 888777. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number eight, staff comments and mental reports. A, city manager, Mr. Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, board. Want to say congratulations and welcome to the new commissioners. Glad to have you. Want to remind everyone that there is going to be training for the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Planning Commissions on December 10th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here, prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and that'll be put on by our city attorney, I guess attorneys. Then also wanted to remind everyone that on the 11th, at 8:30 AM at Triangle School, we'll have our monthly around-town coffee, and again, that's 8:30 AM in the morning on the 11th. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Darty from the board? Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from November 7th, 2024, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
To approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item number nine, A passes 5-0. Item number 10, old business. 10A, rezoning, 7208 Cox Pike. I will now open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, come forward, state your name, address, and if you live in the city or county.
I think I got the right time now. I'm Scott Bryson. I live at 20 LaSalle Street in Clarksville, Tennessee, but I own adjoining property at 7219 Lake Road, so that's why I'm here and I got a notice to be here. I'm not sure if you answer questions. One question I have, if you could answer it, is are there any other adjoining properties that are, that is currently zoned RS-15 property that's being considered?
In our BOC meetings, we do not dialogue back and forth.
Okay.
But you can ask the question, and we will make a note, and if anybody would like to speak to that at the end of the meeting, they can do that.
Well, I don't guess it matters at the end of the meeting, because you're going to pass it before. I'm not speaking against it. My only other comment would be that I would expect if I had an application to change the property I own to RS-15, that it would be approved if you approved this reading of the property adjoining to it. Other than that, congratulations to the new commissioners. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? I will close the public hearing. 10A2, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-16, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, by rezoning 1.51 acres of property located at 7208 Cox Pike, consisting of Williamson County tax map, 042H, Group E, parcel 001.00 from RS-40, single-family residential, to R-15, single-family residential. Property owner, Tony Cavender. City planner, Mr. Greer.
This application came to the Planning and Codes Department from Mr. Cavender to rezone the 1.51-acre parcel. This received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission with a 9-0 vote. That vote happened on September 10th, 2024. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Greer, are there other RS-15s next to this property in question?
Adjoining this property are all RS-40 properties. Across the street is Western Woods, which consists of RS-8, which are 8,000 square-foot lots, and RS-5, which is 5,000 square-foot lots. The request in this case is RS-15, which would be a minimum of 15,000 square feet for a single lot on this property.
So on this property in question, he's able to put three to four homes based on the size?
My professional opinion, he could fit up to three homes on this property. With that, he would have to construct a roadway built to the 50-foot-wide right-of-way City of Fairview Street standard, and it would be very tight to squeeze that in, but it would be possible. The applicant did submit a conceptual plan and had a meeting with our staff about the concept of what they would like to do in this case, which would be to subdivide this property into two individual parcels and to build two individual homes and demolish the existing home that is there. There's also a representative tonight. Ms. Allison Corolla is here, representing the developer with T-Squared Engineering, who's also here to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor.
Yes.
Ethan, just since we do have two new individuals here that might need a little bit extra information on it on the backside, can you just reiterate the regulation regarding lot width and road frontage that would be impacted on this lot due to the limited amount of road frontage that the lot has that, for all intents and purposes, basically builds in a limit on what could be put on that property?
Dan, if you'll give me just one moment, let me pull it up so I don't misquote it. The RS-15 zoning designation allows for exclusively single-family dwellings. It does not allow for duplexes. The maximum height on this has a restriction of 35 feet. Development area per dwelling or room unit is 15,000 square feet. Max lot coverage is 25% of the lot area. And the reason our office recommended Mr. Cavender come in and apply for RS-15 versus R-20, R-20 would accomplish what he is trying to do, except for he would have to ask for a variance due to the lot width requirement. R-20 has a 100-foot requirement for their lot width. This is just shy of 200 feet across there. I believe it's like 198 feet across the frontage there on Cox Pike. RS-15 allows for a 75-foot lot width, and so it was able to accomplish what he was trying to do with this particular lot. With that said, the lot width is a restriction that does come into play with this particular lot due to having their certain amount of road frontage and not being able to meet that requirement if there were additional lots tried to be split out of there.
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
His conceptual plan was for two houses.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor.
Mayor. If he gives you conceptual plans for two dwellings, what happens if he builds a third?
A third dwelling would push this into, because there would be a roadway construction that would have to occur at that point, that would push this into a project that would come to the Planning Commission for approval of that subdivision.
So in essence, he can only build one additional home than what's there now, even though he's going to demolish that one and build a new one in its place, he's only going to add one more.
That's correct.
Mayor. Mr. Greer, what is the benefit of changing the zoning to something that has potential high density like RS-15, over sticking with an RS-20 and giving him the variance?
In my opinion, I think we should always try to look for permitted and permitted reasons to be able to find solutions to challenges. The permitted reason in this is he would be permitted to construct two lots on this property. Due to the lot width requirements with R-20, that seeking a variance, I like to try to limit the amount of variances that we are given, because our code is somewhat open-ended. I think that we should try to stick to our zoning ordinance and enforce that as it is written and follow that to a T. And so looking at what is the correct way of doing this would be come in with a request that accomplished what you are trying to accomplish versus coming in and having a request that then also requires a variance to come in behind that.
I have a follow-up question. Do we have any indication so far of what this area will look like in the new ordinances that TPUDC is going to propose to us?
We do not, not at this time.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item 10A2 passes 4-1. Item 10B.
Mayor. For 10B, Resolution 4424, staff is requesting a deferral for this for 30 days. We have still not received a signed copy of the site development agreement from AgNIP on their project.
Thank you. I make a motion to defer. 10B, Resolution 44-24.
Second.
Jones.
Mayor, is your motion to defer for 30 days?
30 days, please, yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Item 10B passes for deferral 5-0. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 51-24, Resolution of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Board of Commissioners to appoint a vice mayor.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yes.
Like to make a motion to nominate Chris McDonald as vice mayor?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Abstain.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. So we need to swap places. The vice mayor sits to my right.
Just got comfortable.
Sorry. Item 11B, Resolution, I'm sorry, 11A passes with Chris McDonald, vice mayor, 4 and 1 abstention. Item 11B, Resolution 52-24, a resolution authorizing the City of Fairview Fire Department to participate in the James L. Richardson Driver Training Matching Grant Program. Fire Chief, Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is from the fire department because our safety officer for the city, Jake Warren, works for us. This is for him to be able to do background checks or run checks on everyone's driver's license that are drivers for anybody in any city vehicle. And it's not matching, it's just $175. It says matching, but that's the way it reads on there, but we match nothing. I think they give us $175. Jake runs everybody's driver's license to make sure they haven't gotten any restrictions on them or lost them during the previous year.
Do you have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions of Chief Hughes from the board? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item 11C passes, or sorry, 11B passes 5-0. Thank you, Chief. Well, you might as well stay up here, okay? Item 11C, Resolution 53-24, a resolution supporting the submission of an application for the Assistance to Firefighter Grant, AFG, program for the funding from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, as well as support for the required matching funds from the City of Fairview. Fire Chief, Chief Hughes.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is, like it says, the Assistance to Firefighter Grant. It's through FEMA. We try to apply for something every year. This will be a third attempt to get our SCBA's replaced. They are more than two cycles out of compliance with the NFPA. We, they're still functioning. We test them every year like we're supposed to. They are still functioning units, but the cost to replace those are $250,000. That replaces everything in our fleet. And AFG has a 95-5 matching program, so we would pay 5% of that if granted this. We've already got the grant. We've already got the grant written. We just have to have a resolution allowing us to submit it from the Board of Commissioners.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any questions from the board of Chief Hughes?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you don't get this grant, then do you have an idea or a plan or a timeline for when this replacement would need to happen?
So, we replaced the air cylinders when they hydroed out. They're good for 15 years, so we replaced those about five years ago. As long as the packs continue to work, we could use those until they hydroed out. But they try to ask that Fire Department stay within two cycles of compliance. We are outside that compliance now. They just have safety changes and safety features they add to them. So, at some point, we were going to have to bite that bullet and replace those. We're just making every attempt to let the federal government help us out with those.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, is there a possibility of just changing out the regulators if we are not awarded this grant as saving money to the city instead of the entire SCOPAC? SCBA?
No, they're part of one system, the PAC. That's how the, that's why we write the grant for the entire thing. So, we're unable to just change out those and stay in compliance. We'd still be out of compliance because the safety features on the rest of the PAC would not match the new standard.
I just wanted everyone to hear it from you. I understand. I just want everyone to understand that it's not just a one piece that we can replace, that it's the entire PAC that we have to do.
Yes, sir.
And for those who don't know what a SCOPAC is or a breathing apparatus, it's the whole harness that goes on your back that holds the canister of air so that firefighters can breathe in a fire.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11C passes 5-0. Item 11D, Resolution 54-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, confirming the appointment of one citizen to the Parks and Landscape Board. He spoke at the Planning Commission. Well, we can't appoint him yet because we don't have two spots. Well, we've already. You want to explain?
Yes, Mayor. This will be to replace either Mr. Hall or Mr. Buffalini because they are both on the Parks and Landscape Board. So, one of them are, one of them can be on the Parks and Landscape Board, the other one will need to resign, and then you will replace it with one of the two applicants.
Okay. And can you explain about the, when we heard it at the Planning Commission meeting?
At the previous meeting, you were replacing a Mr. Mobley spot who had resigned.
Okay.
This is a different spot.
So, Mr. Mobley was replaced already?
Right.
And then this spot is being replaced by?
It was Commissioner Buffalini's spot who has since been elected to the board.
Okay. And then Mr. Hall will remain, or are we?
That's the board's decision.
So, are we going to decide on both spots tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we will have one person from the board, and then the two who are seeking appointment will, are they here? I'm sorry, are you, okay. So, if you would like to each come up and just tell us your name and a little bit about you so that we can hear from you about this position.
Evening, Mayor, Board. My name is Kevin Lindsey. I am, I live here at 7210 Clear Drive. Been all around this community, coached at the high school, coached at the middle school, took our kids to the state. I also have 20 years of experience at the Parks Department in Franklin. I'm superintendent of facilities and maintenance there. And I just have 20 years that I want to try to throw out there to help the City of Fairview grow their parks and be of any use possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Dale Liedel. I recently moved to Fairview in July, retired out of the Army for 28 years, have project management experience, also several positions in facilities and maintenance and physical security. I'd like to get involved with the community, and I thought serving on a board would be a good start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to offer my resignation of Parks and Landscape Board to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. So, are we going to, as a board, agree for Mr. Hall to remain on the Parks and Landscape Board?
Point of order, I think the board needs to accept the resignation by a vote, and then, then the board can consider leaving Mr. Hall in that position.
Okay. So, would anybody like to say anything about the resignation? If not, we're going to go straight to a vote on that. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
So, as a board, we've accepted Mr. Buffalini's resignation from the Parks and Landscape Board. So, now, we will have discussion on a board member, and if we would like to keep Commissioner Hall on the Parks and Landscape Board, that is fine, but we decide that as a board. If someone would like to make a motion on that.
Point of order, it'd just be a motion to reappoint Mr. Hall.
Okay.
And to reappoint Commissioner Hall to the Parks and Landscaping Board?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Abstain.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
So, this part of 11D is 4 to 1 abstention. Now, we will make a nomination for the individual from the public who will join the board.
Point of order, if the board wants to address any questions, the two.
Does the board have any, we heard them speak, does the board have any questions for either of the gentlemen?
Mayor, I have questions.
Okay, so Mr. Lindsey or Mr. Liedel?
Mr. Liedel. Mr. Liedel, please.
Okay. If you could come to the, back to the podium, Mr. Liedel?
Thank you. Mr. Liedel, do you have prior experience with any kind of landscaping, parks, board work, or anything that would specifically prepare you for this kind of position?
Not professionally, no. I mean, landscaping my own yard, but that's about it.
Have you been on other boards or served on committees?
No, I have not served on any boards.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindsey, I have one question. You don't have to stand up, but, not holding this against you, but where are you from since you just moved here six months ago, or in July?
If he, because we're televised, he'll need to come to the podium to answer.
Okay.
Mr. Lindsey, if you'd like to come to the podium, please.
I've lived here for 25 years. I've lived in the Williamson County all my life. Was I the right one, or was you?
Well, I'm going to ask them both.
Okay. But I've lived here all my life, last 25 years here in Fairview. I own property in the City of Fairview, I own property in the county, and in the state.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Liedel?
I moved here from Brentwood in July. Prior to that, I was retired out of the Army in Virginia.
Thank you for your service, sir.
I would like to point out that Mr. Liedel was one of the candidates at our last meeting who had applied and was, you know, we let him know that when a position came open for him to come back. So, just pointing that out, that he was at our last meeting and applied with another gentleman who actually got an open seat, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, you're saying that because he came last time and he was not selected the last time and Mr. Doug Campbell was selected, that we should automatically include him this time in?
Absolutely not. I'm just pointing out that he was one of the candidates who came forward with Mr. Campbell at the last meeting. Since there were two different commissioners at that meeting, I was just letting the board know. I know Mr. Lindsey, and I have heard from Mr. Liedel, and I think either one, as citizens of this community who want to serve on a board and be part of our community in service, I think either would do a fine job, so I'm going to leave it up to the board to make a motion.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to confirm Dale Liedel to the Planning Commission? I'm, I apologize, to the Parks and Landscape Board?
Do you have a second?
Point of order, the motion will fail unless there's a second.
Absolutely. I will second Mr. Liedel. Are there any other nominations? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Nay.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Liedel. This part of 11D passes 3-2. Mr. Lindsey, at any given time, we have positions open on different boards, and we would love for you to come back and serve on one of those if you'd like. Apply, apply to serve on one of those if you'd like. Thank you. Item 11E, Resolution 55-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing Team Construction LLC to perform open cut excavation along Chester Road. City engineer, Mr. Greer. I'm sorry, well, you'll be, you'll be speaking about it.
I'll be speaking on behalf of our city department. Team Construction has requested to open cut across Chester Road and cross Chester Road in two locations to install a gas line for a development that is currently under construction. Title 16203 of the City of Fairview Municipal Code states, "Open cut excavations beneath paved roads or streets for the installation of utility pipelines, cables, or conduits is prohibited except when, item A, the proposed pipeline or cable or conduit has a nominal diameter greater than 12 inches. This gas line does not meet that requirement. A connection is required to an existing pipeline, cable, or conduit within the limits of the road or street pavement. This gas line does not meet that requirement. In the opinion of the Public Works Director, the location of other existing infrastructure makes boring, jacking, or tunneling not safe or not practical. In this case, they're asking to cross the road and not go parallel with the road." And so, that item is not considered. Item D, an emergency repair is required. This is a new gas line. This is not an emergency repair. And item E, when approved by the Board of Commissioners, which brings this item to your desk tonight for your consideration. On the screen above, you can see the gas line currently ends at Pen Grove Lane in Cherokee Hills. They're looking to tap into that point of the gas line, run down Chester Road, cross Chester Road, run along the west side of Chester, and then cross Chester back into the development for the reserves on Chester development. And so, we are asking the board if they can cross at those two points of crossing, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mayor?
Yes.
So, we started a paving project on Chester. I know that they already put their lines down and saw cut middle line and are probably ready to start their paving process. What's the timeline on putting that gas pipe in and not having to rip out a brand-new road that we just paid to have installed? And is there an option not to go across the road and perhaps use an easement along that trail?
So, they could operate to the east side of Chester Road or north side in this photograph and run down. They would still have to cross Little John Lane at that point, but that would be their most direct route. There is some utility infrastructure that is in the ground on that side that would potentially cause conflict, but I don't believe that it would cause enough conflict for them not to be able to run their pipe along that side of the road. This was their proposal for the path that they, Team Construction would like to take with this gas line, and that's why it's before you.
Does their timeline go before the paving?
Their timeline is as soon as possible. At this point, looking at the, you know, weather throughout the month and knowing that the asphalt plant is likely to close prior to the end of the month with colder weather coming, I would project that this gets done prior to the paving of Chester Road to prevent that case that you're speaking of, of paving a new road and then immediately open cutting a new road.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. Greer, does this project in any way overlap with something that's coming up in just a couple of items on our agenda? in just a couple of items on our agenda with the stormwater maintenance with the culverts? I see an address that seems to overlap with this one perhaps?
This item is exclusively for the gas line with Team Construction. The item that you're speaking of at a later date is for a culvert and a city project that the city is working on.
But my question is about the locations. These are the same, roughly same location on Chester Road?
No, this is on, I call it the Highway 100 side of Chester Road. The Kyle's Creek kind of four-way stop there. This is closer to, closer to Highway 100 than that location that the culvert would be installed.
So these would be in two completely different areas on Chester Road?
That's correct.
But all of Chester Road is getting repaved?
That is correct.
And, and where are we in the repavement process of Chester Road?
Currently, they have milled Chester Road and have began preparatory plans for the being able to lay the asphalt. The weather has not been very cooperative. I don't expect it, if you look at the next 10 days, it doesn't get much more cooperative. You have to be 40 degrees at a minimum and rising to be able to lay asphalt. And so these 30-degree, 25-degree nights are not very promising for having asphalt laid prior to the plant's opening in March.
Well, I really want to take into consideration the livability for everybody who's on Chester Road and has to drive down Chester Road. Is, is the current weather amenable to laying a gas line while we're waiting for the asphalt to be weather-ready?
Yes, so there are, they would, their process would be to open cut the road. They would maintain one lane of traffic at all times while they're doing their operation. And then they would cover that back up. They would lay down a temporary resurfacing. It's very common practice to lay down temporary resurfacing until they're able to permanently restore that asphalt on the top layer. In this case, by the time that it came to permanently restore the asphalt, the city would be paving Chester Road.
So, so what you're saying, I think what I hear you saying, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we can make this work where we could coordinate between the gas line and the repaving, so the gas line doesn't have to rip up new pavement. We can just get the gas line laid where it has to cross the road and then just do the paving when it's, when it's ready to go with the weather?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11E passes 5-0. 11F, Resolution 56-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Fairview, Tennessee to adopt the 2024 Williamson County Hazard Mitigation Plan. City manager, Tom Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, board. This is a county document that has come before this body before, but it has to be, it has to be in compliance with FEMA and TEMA. The county, everything with the city is, is in order, but the county had to make some adjustments to be in compliance with FEMA. And this coming back around to get the, this document went to every municipality in the county to get on board with the county hazard mitigation plan. So it's pretty much just saying, yes, we're on board with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions of Mr. Darty from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11F passes 5-0. 11G, Resolution 57-24, a resolution awarding the bid to the lowest responsible, responsive and responsible bidder, Cunningham Construction and Development LLC for the ARPA Stormwater Improvement Projects. City manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you again. You have in your packet the bid documents for the ARPA Stormwater Improvements, which pretty much include culverts on Northwest Highway, on Chester Road, Horn Tavern, and possibly Sleepy Hollow. The bid came in at 1.288 million. We have approximately 2.4 million to spend. The remaining of the money, we have some, a couple of possible additional projects to add. And then we also wanna have the two one-lane roads in Fairview engineered to be two-lane bridges. I didn't mean roads, I meant bridges. The one on Sleepy Hollow and the one on Horn Tavern. That would pretty much get it spent. This Civil Environmental Consultants has been very helpful in getting our American Rescue Plan moving forward. And I'm willing to entertain any questions. I would tell you this. We, if we don't pass it, we, we possibly could be out of compliance on December 31st. If, if something's not passed, then we have, have somebody contracted to do the work. So this, this pretty much gets, gets contracted, gets everything lined up. And the plan is to get everything started in early spring, around March, April. But any questions, I'll be welcome to entertain.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, when did we get this grant? Or was it awarded to us rather?
We went over this. It's been, I would say, two and a half, three years, would be my guess. I would have to go back and look at the exact date when it came in.
Two and a half, three years, and I believe we only got one bid for this project from one bidder?
Correct.
Did we ever figure out where we advertised it? I'm just curious.
Yes, yes.
That was a question that I had for you.
Yes, we had, we did advertise in the local paper, which you have copies of that, and on our website. And then it also was advertised on Governor's Office of Diversity Business Enterprise, which is a grant website posting form. CEC posted, posted it on, on that website, which it was a requirement for compliance with the grant.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Any other questions of Mr. Darty from the board?
Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
Mr. Darty, this two bridges, is the one down at Horn Tavern, is that the one down there near the Springs, Horn Tavern Springs?
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's, I'm glad to see that being widened. It's been a very dangerous one for a long, long time. Thanks.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Darty, what's the total amount of the ARPA money that we have remaining to spend?
It's 2 million, 300, and some change.
The bid is for 1.3 million roughly, so 1.288. If the costs for the work actually go over what the bid amount is for, then we can use up to the total amount of the ARPA funding that we have. Is that correct?
Correct, and we're anticipating adding a couple of other projects to this in the contract. It says we can add two, and then it also, those two engineering of the, of the one-lane bridges, we feel like will cover, cover those costs, I mean, cover the amount.
In addition to the bridges and the roads, what are the other projects that you are mentioning?
It would be stormwater culvert-type projects. It's in the packet on the road. I'm thinking it's, it's more work on Horn Tavern, but I'm gonna, I would, I would have to look in the packet with you. But it's, it's, those are not definite, and he hasn't bid them out yet, but they're optional.
Thank you. And so looking at what we've got in front of us tonight, just I'm seeing the stormwater improvements on Northwest Highway, Chester Road, and Horn Tavern Road, but I don't see anything about the bridges. Has that been priced out yet?
Yes, that's, that has been, we, we sat down in a meeting, Public Works Director, myself, and CEC, and priced all this out, and you will have more coming to you with that. But as of right now, it was vital we get this contractor under contract.
I understand. And just one more question then. In a, in a priority list, say the, the bidding comes in high on those one-lane bridges, and we cannot do additional stormwater, like the projects you were saying, what, what is the priority list? Do you know? Like, what are the projects that we would most certainly try to get in with this ARPA funding? Or what might we not? Like, is there one bridge we would do instead of another? Can you just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we're, we won't be doing any construction on the bridges. We just hope to get them engineered for down the road when we find funds to, to do the construction. As far as other priority, I will leave that up to our Public Works Director, Todd Bratcher. We will talk it over. These three areas right here, we feel like are the most pressing, and that's why they're, they're on there, and then he'll say, well, we really need this or that. And it's, it's kind of flexible, which I think it works in our favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Darty? Mayor, sorry. Mr. Darty, the, the award that we had received was 2,713,741 dollars. Now, we've been already paid on all of that, correct? Right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we've already used 250,000 dollars of that. 132, 133,000 dollars was on Project 2209. What was that project?
That was more stormwater. I did look that up after y'all left. It was Sutton Place Culverts.
So we added 22.7 million. We deduct 250,000 dollars. That leaves us down to the 2.3, correct? Somewhere around there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11G passes 5-0. 11H, Ordinance 2024-17, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning a 1.27 acre portion of the 5.60 acre parcel located at 7103 Wiley Circle, consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042H, Group C, Parcel 008.00, from C1 Commercial Zoning District to RS8 Single Family Residential Zoning District, property owner Wiley Circle Investments. City Planner, Mr. Greer.
Just rezoning, and just to go through the, the process, I know we have a couple of new faces tonight. So the rezoning begins with a pre-application meeting with our staff, and then a application is submitted. It goes through a seven-week review period in, with our staff going back and forth with the applicant to ensure that they are meeting all of our regulations. And then it goes to the Planning Commission for their recommendation to the board. In this case, this item received a favorable recommendation of a seven-to-zero vote. There were two that were absent last Planning Commission meeting. And then tonight, for this item, is a first reading. And then we will subsequently have a public hearing and a second and final reading for this item prior to it becoming zoned, this district. The parcel in question fronts Highway 100 and Wiley Circle. The applicant is seeking to rezone the Wiley Circle frontage to RS8, and that's the 1.27 acre piece. Our planning recommendation was for a positive recommendation for approval due to the residential nature of Wiley Circle in maintaining the residential character along Wiley Circle and eliminating any future potential for commercial access off of a residential street and keeping the commercial access along Highway 100. Tonight, we have Mr. Tim Mangrum, who is the developer on this, who's representing the project here to answer any questions that you may have.
Sorry, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be glad to attempt to answer them.
Mayor? Hi, Mr. Mangrum. Just to help draw a little picture, a little bit better for this part. So, so this property would be parceled so that there would be two pieces then. One would remain commercial, and then the other would go residential facing Wiley Circle?
That is correct. And we, we actually submitted a concept. It's, it's, it's not set in stone, but we did submit a concept showing how these lots would lay. I don't know if we have access to those tonight or not, but, but it, the concept shows six lots. We have discussed possibly putting a wide sidewalk between lots three and four for pedestrian access to Wiley Circle if there's ever walkability to get to the old church building, because we intend to refurbish that. So for commercial and walkability, we thought we may put a sidewalk in there to, to allow for that access.
Mangrum, is that a historical building, the church?
It's not on any, any historical registry.
Okay.
But it's been, it's been there for a long time. I don't know how long, but it's been there a long time.
Right.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11H passes 5-0. Thank you. Item 11I, Ordinance 2024-18, an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. City manager, Tom Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, board. This budget, amended budget, just wanna kind of tell you about the process of amending a budget. We, there's, there's two readings. This first reading, if it passes, then, then it would be, have a second read at the, at the December 19th meeting. And any changes that the board would like in between, we're- And any changes that the board would like, um, in between, uh, we're, we're allowed to make changes of, between the document and then the next meeting. So, just, just wanted y'all to be aware of that. Basically, what, what the city's asking for is to increase allocations of 106,880 dollars. If we do this, we'll still have an estimated ending fund balance for the fiscal year 2025 of just a little under 5.7 million dollars. I believe this, um, increase in allocation expenditures will in no way put the city in jeopardy, and I believe we, um, it will be, um, fine till, till July 1. Uh, I will entertain any questions, and...
Mayor? So, Mr. Darty, do I understand this correctly? If we approve this tonight, there's going to be an, an additional reading December 19th?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes?
Just for a point of clarification, too, a vote, a positive vote tonight to move it to the second reading doesn't lock you into approving it or anything like that. It just moves it to that second reading, correct? Just so everybody's on the same page on that.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, Mr. Darty, would there be, there be a public hearing on this at all, or a workshop?
We would definitely plan on having a workshop before the 19th meeting. Uh, this amended budget does not require a public hearing. The, um, the budget in July will require a hearing.
Darty, did you say you, you, we will be having a workshop on the 19th on that, or it's just open to it?
I would, I would think we would, it would be good. I would definitely, definitely have a workshop for sure, and there, there might be, depending on, there may be a couple other topics on the, on the agenda that we want to discuss as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Being very new up here and seeing the budget amendments, um, there's a, there's a lot, and we did have questions about them before. If we were to request a deferral for even the first vote until the 19th, would we be able to have the second hearing in January then at the first meeting?
Yes. I mean, it's, it's, it's a two, it takes two, two reads to pass.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Like a motion to defer the vote on the budget until the December 19th meeting?
Point of order, I, I think it should be a motion to defer the first reading. 24-18 till December 19th.
Thank you.
Second.
So, I know there was, first off, I totally respect and understand the request to defer it from their position, being brand new. I understand why they would want some extra time to look at that. Budget is the cornerstone of everything that we do here, so that's, um, I think it's acceptable. However, um, in talking with some of the department heads, I know the Fire Department had a time-sensitive piece to their budget amendment. Is there any process in which that could be considered separate from the remainder of the budget, or is it an all-or-nothing thing?
It's all one document.
And I guess to reiterate, we are gonna, we will have two votes on this. So, if we have a workshop on the 19th, we will have the workshop, then we will vote, but that's not the final. It won't be final until the actual second vote.
The second vote would be on the 19th, right after the workshop?
Absolutely. I, I apologize. You're right.
Or on the 19th, if you want.
And that, that's where I was going with that, sorry. Yes, I, that's, I apologize. That, that's where I was going with that, is that we could, we will hear it tonight, and then, um, we will have the workshop and a vote, and if, um, I guess we'll have to decide about the sensitive issue on the Fire Department, but we could defer it on the second vote if the new members aren't ready to vote on it yet.
Mayor?
Yes?
Is there a way of separating the Fire Department budget?
Um, Mr. Mc, uh, Commissioner, Vice Mayor McDonald just asked that, and we can't. It's, that's okay. It, he, he had just asked that, but there's, there's no way to sep, separate the document. It's one document.
Here, if I might add to that. I think that is a great point. Um, again, like I said, I do respect the, the request for deferral, as it, it is a completely warranted request, being brand new to this, to the seat. However, I do find it, um, rather harmless to move past the first reading tonight and all, we, and potentially defer the second reading if more was needed, because if, over the next two weeks prior to that 19th, all the information you're looking for is gathered, we wouldn't have to delay any longer. But the option to push it would always be there. There is, uh, not a whole lot of harm in just moving past the first reading, I guess, is my point.
If, if, um, y'all aren't ready on the second one, we can, we can defer it then. So, either you can, um, change the motion, or we can vote on it.
Or a point of order, you could retract the motion in the second. So, there's...
Okay.
Complicate things.
Right. Well, the motion could still pass, so I, and I'm still interested in deferring, so I'm not going to retract it. Thank you, though.
Any other questions? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Nay.
Mr. Carter, help me with this one. Do we need to have a new motion for approval since the deferral failed?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Nay.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Nay.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Item 11I passes 3-2. Item 11J, Ordinance 2024-19, an ordinance of the City of Fairview, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Section 6-102.10, general exceptions to height regulations, Section 8-103.3, parentheses, one, general exceptions to height regulations, and Section 9-103.3, parentheses, one, general exceptions to height regulations to provide clarity to permitted exceptions to height regulations and to provide a height exception for all land uses within the city facilities, land use category as listed in Section 3-103.2. Mr. Greer?
This item before you tonight is for an exception to the height regulations. Items that you read, 6-102.1, 8-103.3, and 9-103.3 are the locations in the zoning ordinance that the height regulations provide general exemptions. Those are within the industrial zone districts, the commercial zone districts, and residential zone districts. This item was brought tonight, um, received a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission with a seven-to-zero vote with two members being absent. This ordinance came, uh, from our office in Planning and Codes, uh, from the police chief with their training tower. They sought a variance from the ordinance for height regulations, uh, for their 50-foot training tower for the police training facility located on the out parcel. That variance was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals. The police chief then reached out to our, uh, legal counsel, and through, uh, discussions and looking at how other cities, um, regulate items regarding community facilities. The ordinance was written to permit community facilities, which are all government-built properties, schools, libraries, justice centers, city halls, police departments, fire stations, all commu, uh, government-owned properties, to allow a general height exception to community facilities, which would allow their training tower to be 50 feet in height. Currently, our permitted height is 35 feet. The language does read within the ordinance. Uh, it is the same for residential, commercial, and industrial zone districts. The language reads, "The maximum height regulations contained in all residential or commercial or industrial zone districts, bulk regulations shall not apply to church spires, bellfries, cupolas, domes, radio towers, flagpoles, water tanks, silos, grain elevators, ventilators, chimneys, or other appert, appertances usually required to be placed above the roof level of a building, and not intended for human occupancy. Additionally, the maximum height regulations contained in any residential, commercial, or industrial zone district, bulk regulations shall not apply to any land use found within the community facilities activity classification as found in Section 3-103.2 of the zoning ordinance." Be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mayor?
Yes?
Is there any clarification as to why Boz, uh, Boz didn't give a pass on that?
They legally can't. There's, there's four criteria, and that, what, they weren't, it wasn't a true variance they were requesting. A true variance has to do with the property having some unusual characteristic. So, it wasn't an appropriate thing to even request a variance for, and I didn't attend that meeting, but the Board of Zoning Appeals did their job by denying it, because they legally couldn't approve a variance. It wasn't a proper variance to grant in the first place. The problem really has to do with our zoning code, because it's antiquated, which is one of the reasons why we're going through the process to uh, adopt a new zoning code. It's very common in every city that I've worked in, uh, in every city that I'm aware of, to have a community facilities use, uh, to allow taller than the maximum use. 35 feet is, is very short. It used to be that had to do with fire suppression, but that was in the days before being able to sprinkle and ladder trucks and, and, and other things. So, this just would get our code in line with the norm. And, and so I think that goes beyond your, your question, but the Board of Zoning Appeals should not, and, and legally could not grant it, is why.
Do you think there's an option for TPU DC to look at this and make a recommendation to us?
I don't think so, because that's not really their role. They've been hired to adopt, to, to prepare the new code for us to review, but I, I can tell you that this sort of exception is, is completely normal and to be expected, and frankly, I was surprised that there was no relief.
Thank you.
I think it's in line with what our neighbors, all of our neighbors have, have had for some time. I will note that in our rewriting of our zoning ordinance, our new development code will have a taller height than the 35 feet that is currently permitted.
Mayor? Well, Mr. Greer, if that's the case, I've got a question. When is the construction on this even slated to begin?
Mr. Darty, do you have that answer?
We would like it, um, we would like to have this project completed. If it's, if it's this fiscal year, it'd be awesome. Um, it might go into, into next fiscal year a little, but, um, if we can, you know, get our, get our plans, get it, get our, uh, plans. Now, granted, we'll go on and have some plans drawn up regardless, but, uh, it would just, it would just be optimal and preferable if we had it all together the way, the way, uh, it's going to best serve, um, uh, our officers and, and provide them the best opportunity for training. Uh, but, like I said, I'm, I'm, I, the zoning ordinance is pushing fast as well. They're four and a half months ahead of schedule, so we're, you know, the government's usually slow, 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 and, and of course, they're not the government, but we're, things, I mean, hopefully, hopefully, this fiscal year might, might go over in the next fiscal year as well, but I'm, I'm thinking it's very possible we can get it done.
Once you get the dra, I can tell you, once you get the draft of the new zoning code, I, I expect a long lag time. By the time we get it, and the time it's finally adopted, because it will need to be edited and reviewed in several rounds of revisions. I, I can't tell you what that will be, because it will be highly dependent on your input and the Planning Commission's input, my input, and, and others.
Thank you. Well, I, I mean, I've got so many questions about this that go outside of the scope of what we're being asked to decide tonight. Partially because we're talking about this fiscal year getting started, and is that allocated in the budget right now to get started or to draft anything? Um, and then, uh, do we have the construction for this budgeted already? The, it was approved, the, the training facility was approved years ago, but is that currently funded by the current budget?
Yes, we originally had, uh, 500,000 in with the original budget. This amended budget adds 250 to that. And then, um, we also added, uh, 75,000 to the zoning rewrite. I was hoping on the zoning rewrite to kind of straddle between budgets where it, we didn't hit it all on one, where we could split it between them, but, um, you know, like I said, if we can get it done, it's a one-time expense, get it behind us, and let's, you know, move forward, but, um, did that answer your question?
Um, I think, I think that it did.
Okay.
So, but I'm going to restate it, and you can tell me if I understand you.
Okay.
So, um, the, the funding approval to bring basically the cost up to date for the training facility is in our amended budget.
Correct.
And then the, the change to the zoning ordinance would really only pertain to this training tower, but it would change the rule for any government building.
The ordinance in itself, we are looking to every building, not just specifically government building, but every buildings uh, within the new development code would have a taller maximum than 35 feet. This particular item that's on our agenda tonight to consider is exclusively for community facilities, which are government-owned buildings.
And do, do we have an idea why this needs to go from 35 to 50 feet? Have we had an explanation of the need for that? Have we had an explanation of the need for that?
This exemption does not stop at 50 feet. This would allow the government to build theoretically at any height that they would like.
Well, I guess what I was asking was specifically about the reason that we're looking at this. Do we know why this specific structure needs to be 50 feet?
Yes, I can answer that. Chief and I have talked a ton, but it helps simulate shooting off a roof. It helps simulate being in a three-story building. It also helps ensure safety, because it's a more direct, the higher you are, of course, the better the angle is going down into the burn. So it's, in my opinion, it's 15 feet, and it allows the training that Chief Humphries feels like, the height that he feels like he can get the most optimal use out of in training. Did that answer the question?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I can add, this is not, not a legal answer, but I've been around community law for a while, but the 50-foot is also a magic number for ISO ratings, insurance. When they train at that height, they'll apply on their insurance because they are.
I've got just a quick question. Back to that, are these towers only used for shooting, or are there other training purposes for them?
Yes, they can be multi-use. There's going to be a rappelling on the back, and they're multi-use, multi-agency usage.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is this limited to 50 feet, or I think you said they can go as high as they want? Is that correct, Mr. Greer?
That is correct. This does not limit anything to 50 feet. This would allow for any community facility to have an exception to the height regulations.
If, Mr. Greer, the city would still have to approve the structure, though it would have to go through the Planning Commission, have a recommendation.
That is correct.
So if somebody had an idea, harebrained idea to build 150-foot tall, you all would still need to approve it. It's not like they could just build it.
Yeah.
Sure, we're all on the same page.
Mayor, I have one quick question.
Yes.
So in essence, what Commissioner Buffalini was saying, this is open-ended as far as height regulation go?
That is correct, exclusively for government-use facilities. So the five of you ultimately would be voting on whatever comes through here, or the Planning Commission would be voting on it. You know, there is some regard as far as what the government would present as a reasonable height that I think would be fair to understand within this, but it would allow for a 50-foot training tower to be built.
Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Ms. Jones?
We don't have a motion, Mayor.
Okay, well, maybe we need a motion first. We talked about it for so long, I forgot we didn't have a motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Mayor, if I may add to the discussion now. In the Planning Commission, those that might have caught that, this, when this was discussed, I had a little pushback on it, not necessarily because of what it's trying to achieve. I think that the police department is completely warranted in what they're trying to build for, to add to their ability to protect our community. But there was, I guess, I took issue with the process that we went through to get there. It's great to understand from Mr. Carter that Boza was kind of a moot point to begin with, because that was part of my issue, was if Boza made a decision, we should respect that. Not a big fan of government overreach and all that, so just trying to do my part. But I do think this is for a good cause, as it is a municipal building. It's very common, as stated multiple times in other municipalities across the board. I don't think there's anything wrong with it or dangerous with it. It is, like I said, I just wish there was a little bit more transparency on the original presentation of it, but that is my only bone to pick with it. That is all.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11J passes five zero. I'm number 12, Roundtable Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, congratulations to both new members. They've done a good job tonight. I've sat back and listened to all their good questions, so y'all doing a great job. Thank you for your input. First, I want to thank all the employees that do such a good job for us, and the police officers that are here tonight, and the fire department got two nice grants, and it's hard to come across a 5% grant, but that's excellent to do that, Chief. Anyway, thanks for all the citizens and everything, the input that they do. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Buffalini?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to congratulate Carolyn Roberts on her win as a commissioner. Also, I want to let everybody know in the city of Fairview, even if you're not from the city of Fairview or Tennessee, there's still chances for you to be part of the city, and I am definitely one of those people that are benefiting from that, you know, living here for four years, being elected by good margins. We made it happen, and like I said, anyone is available to step up and do something, whether you're here for six months, or if you're here for 30 years or a whole lifetime, you know, everyone's welcome. I'd also like to start, I really want to thank my wife for all of her unwavering support. She worked tirelessly, day and night, helping me do everything. It was pretty crazy. We knocked on a lot of doors. We didn't get to a lot of doors, so next time, I promise you, we'll knock on the other doors that we haven't. She helped me design all my marketing, and I couldn't have done it without her. To my kids, who have been there every step of the way, whether they be in Mississippi, Alabama, they were all there for me, and I appreciate them. To my old friends from New York to Florida, thank you for your encouragement. Special shout-out to my, one of my best friend, Mike, who's been calling me a politician since middle school, even though I don't feel like this is a political, but I guess it is. I just want to say thank you. He promised me life would never be a bore, and he was not kidding. To my friends here in Fairview, who I consider family, thank you for helping me get the word out, wearing my T-shirts with the name every Thursday night at Canos Trivia. I thank you for that, and temporarily renaming your team. I love you guys, I really do. Mr. Dan Binkley for opening up his junkyard Opry every Friday night to me and to hosting our victory party. A huge thanks to Mr. Bill Ewald for being my treasurer, helping me every step of the way through my campaign, and I really appreciate it. A heartfelt thank you goes out to Tennessee State Representative, newly-elected Lee Reeves, for mentoring me every day, sometimes several times a day, and to Senator Jack Johnson for his wisdom and guidance in helping me where I am today. Also, want to thank my Wednesday night men's group. They've been there for me, and highly encouraged to be part of that group and other groups as well. If you're not part of anything, it's good to be welcomed everywhere. One Church Home for being there, the Lord for bringing such wonderful opportunities into my life and the people in my life, and I really appreciate that. Special thanks to the 2,805 voters who placed their trust in me. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Your belief in me to do what's right for Fairview means everything. Elections give people the voice, and the citizens of Fairview have overwhelmingly spoken about what they want, and they want change. And that's exactly what we're going to do. We're going to make change. We're going to start from the bottom up. There'll be change in our vision, our zoning, our codes, but we can't do it alone. We need all of you, the people who want change, to join us. We want to hear your voices. We want to see people show up to these meetings. I've been showing up for a couple of years now, and typically, there's five people there. We're going to do what we can to get everything out there and be as transparent as we can, because we can't do it without you. We can only do it together and make change happen. Finally, I want everyone to know that no matter where you are from, once again, Fairview will welcome you with open arms, because that's what they did with me and my family. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Well, it's a tough one to follow, but congratulations, Don, on your election, and thank you to everyone who has placed me here and entrusted me with this. I really appreciate it. Thank you to the rest of the board for gently guiding me this evening, and to Mr. Carter for helping me when I didn't quite get Robert's Rules of Orders right. I promise that will change over time. But thank you also to the staff who's staying late tonight, and to the police officers, and to Chief Hughes for sticking us out, too. I just wanted to congratulate the Fairview Middle School wrestling team on an undefeated season, and they are heading off to state, so I'm very proud of them. And I hope to see everybody at the parade on Saturday and the tree lighting here at City Hall Saturday evening. We're supposed to have good weather for it, so I'm very excited about that. Thank you to everybody who's here this evening and who's watching online. I hope that this is the start of a really great four-year term with a lot of engagement from the community, and there's so much excitement coming ahead, so really, really looking forward to the next meeting on the 19th.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, congratulations to the two of you. You got your first meeting under your belt already. Hopefully, you're starting to feel a little bit more comfortable in your seat, and looking forward to the future with you guys. Congratulations to, I'm going to try my best, Dale Liedel. Is that, did I pronounce that correctly? Look forward to you serving on the Parks and Landscaping Board as well. And then, just a thank you to the mayor and fellow commissioners for trusting in me to fill the seat of vice mayor. I am humbled by the opportunity and very grateful, so thank you all for that. That is all I have.
First of all, welcome Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Buffalini to the board. I had the opportunity recently to go to a leadership conference in Utah, and what a conference it was, from seven in the morning until seven at night. Leaders from all over Williamson County got together. We will have, we're all putting together a report that I will read to the community. It's not quite ready yet, but I do want to say that the collaboration between the leaders of this community and different representatives from BNA, banks, and construction companies, and just all the people who deal with all the situations that we deal with across our community and across our middle Tennessee region. I think we all have the same issues. We have traffic, we have growth pains with that, we have water and sewer issues, transportation, just a lot of different things that we were able to discuss and brainstorm and really just take a look at. And I think one thing that we came to a conclusion about is this is not an individual city issue. Sometimes, it just seems like we, say, Fairview, and we want to try to tackle all of our issues, but this is a region issue. This is a, these are issues that the middle Tennessee as a region, we all need to come together and collaborate and figure out these issues, and it doesn't stop at our borders. It stops, it continues on, and as long as we work on this as a group and a region to, you know, work through these issues, I think this is going to work well for all the middle Tennessee region to do it this way. So I will have a total report on everything we discussed soon, as soon as the report is completed. Also, over the last few days, it has just been my pleasure to be able to be involved in the Tennessee College of Applied Science and Technology programs throughout Davidson County, Williamson County, and Dixon. We have, in Dixon, if you're familiar with the TriStar emergency beside Colton's, the TriStar has donated to TCAT property, which a building's going to be built, and the students will be able to go to this facility, and it's all about health care. So sometimes, students, their path may not be going to a four-year college and getting a degree like that. They may want to go more of a technical route, get hands-on experience, and start working immediately. And I heard from several young people who are doing just that. A young lady named Lindsay, very sharp, I'd love to have her come and speak for our Board of Commissioners and our community. She actually had a 31 on the ACT 4.0 grade point average. You would kind of think that type of student would be headed straight to college with scholarships, but she chose to go into the aviation field, and one of the TCAT facilities has aviation as a part of their program, and she wanted to do that so that she could get the hands-on experience more quickly and get into the field more quickly than going to a four-year college. So it's just the different students, this opportunity for them helps with our different situations where, if you think about it, there's plumbers, electricians, aviation, banks, hotels, different people who, we all need more of this type of student getting this experience earlier, and we're just lacking in a lot of those fields, and so this is a great opportunity. I, Dr. Jeremy Qualls was on our Utah trip, and he, three years ago, went on a leadership conference trip and came up with an idea for what they call the Innovation Hub. The Innovation Hub is a TCAT program, and it will be located, if you are familiar with the Franklin High School campus, on the left side of that used to be the old Williamson County Animal Control. Now we have a big, brand-new, beautiful facility that's over off of Matt Hatcher. So they've repurposed those buildings, but the Innovation Hub is going to be a brand-new building that's built, and if you go on the Williamson Inc. website, you can get more information about that, but it's, what the beauty of it is, is these different, like, aviation hotel, electrical, and BNA airports, they all have partnered with the Innovation Hub to bring forth these technologies for these students. So it's just a really exciting, Dr. Jeremy Qualls coming up with this, and it being his vision, and us being able to break ground two days ago was just incredible for the students in our community, and it serves all of Williamson County. So it's not just, even though it's in Franklin, it's not just for Franklin, it's for all of Williamson County. So I just encourage anyone who wants to find out about this to go on the Williamson Inc. website and take a look at it. So that's-- to go on the Williamson, Williamson, Inc. website and, and take a look at it. So that's, that's some exciting news there. Also, I just encourage everyone to take part this Saturday in all the different activities we have going on. This is going to be an exciting day for Fairview. We've got ten AM Christmas Parade, twelve AM, go to the Historical Village, which is across from, did I say that wrong? Twelve PM, not twelve AM. Yeah, don't, not midnight. So twelve PM, the Historical Village, which is across from the Rec Center, we will have caroling with our, you know, with our own Matthew Lester, who lives in our community. He's amazing. He performs for us at Nature Fest. He's going to do the caroling for us, and it's interactive, so the kids just have loved that in the past and can get involved. We will have the buildings open so that everyone can tour those. In the post office, we always have letters that the children can write and post and send to Santa. And we will have Santa Claus at the Historical Village Triangle School so that we, you can bring your camera or your phones and, or cameras and take pictures with Santa of your children. Then at four PM, we will begin, we will have the high school choir at, here at City Hall, and we will start our festivities at four here, and then five PM, the tree lighting. So we just hope that, bundle up, and we hope that the community comes and, and enjoys the day. It's going to be a, a lot of fun on Saturday and lots of things for our community. Welcome, Mr. Liedel, to the Parks and Landscape Board. I know that you will do a great job. And we're just so excited to see people in our community wanting to serve. Thank you, Chief Hughes, for every, all of y'all, all of your work and your team's work acquiring these grants. Anytime we can get a grant, it saves our community money. And we, we appreciate all the hard work acquiring these grants. Okay, so let's remember December tenth, training session at five PM. December nineteenth is our next regular meeting at seven PM. And as I always say, we love our community, so let's please be aware and help pick up trash and not throw it out. And thank you to our staff and everything you do for us every day. I entertain a motion to adjourn.